Call this regular meeting to order for the record. This is a regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA. It is 6:30 PM. Today is Monday, April 18th. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and place the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So for the record, I have participating in person, Councilwoman Waldrin, Councilwoman Nitya, Councilwoman Rouette, Councilwoman Cavanero, and participating via Zoom, I have Councilwoman Hona and Councilwoman Oliver. And props to the one that's calling in from out of state while they're on vacation. So item number one, I'll open the meeting with a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4E of the City Council and WPCA meeting rules of procedure.
Move number one.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldrin. Second, my Councilwoman Rouette. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board?
Hi, everybody. Mario on the Bucow 4420 Farm Lane. Hopefully for last time, when speaking of the skateboard, skate park, rather. We've already established the previous meeting that Park and Rec has the sole responsibility for locating the skate park. We had a great meeting last week with the mayor, some department heads. We made some progress there. Park and Rec gave some assurances that they would try to aesthetically improve the park if they located it or when they located it, the Bessie Pond, which is their preferred choice. And there's a meeting on that on Wednesday through plantings and some actually reducing the fencing rather than increasing the fencing. And but tonight, as we discussed briefly in our meeting, I wanted to not so much talk about the location of the park, but the the sense of spending $365,000 bucks on a park that perhaps seen its better days. Park and Rec and the mayor understandably does not want to take the park offline for any long period of time. But, you know, we have plow trucks that come in under repair. You know, $350,000 plow truck. We don't want to spend $200,000 to repair it. Those decisions have to be made as far as chasing good money after bad. Someone, not myself, put up a survey today online. And 70%, 70% of the respondents felt like potentially alternate sites could be considered other than Bessie Pond. And 75% of the respondents who are skateboarders, most, some of them anyway, were in favor of closing the park if they had to, if the end result was getting a better park in the end. So all I ask is, and I know it's not under your purveyor ship, but the $365,000 that's going to the skate park, and we'll certainly talk about this on Wednesday, I'm sure, at Park and Rec, the 365 that's going to the skate park seems like, according to the research I've done, is just about halfway there towards another skate park. Of course, we can't just snap our fingers and make that happen. But a new skate park is about $60,000, $60 a square foot for a plaza-style street skate park, which is kind of looks like a nice park. And I think something like that should be considered rather than spending 365 and then being right back in the same boat we are in now, five years from now, having to replace some of those components of the skate park. So just something to spit fire about and talk about and appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longo Bucow. Still open to the public. All right, we'll move on. Oh, yes, sorry.
How you doing? My name is Eric Wolfgang Pinto. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I've been in private practice for approximately eight years now. With my practice being in Manchester, I'm here with David Bernier, and we're here representing a group called The Collective, which is powered by Cureleaf. And this is in relation to cannabis coming into your town. And I know it's been a bit of a topic recently. I read an article in regards to some discussions that you guys have had internally recently in regards to cannabis. We're here, I'm here representing the group, The Collective again, which is in partnership with Cureleaf. And I'm representing my wife, who is also a licensed clinical social worker in private practice, operating out of Manchester, Connecticut as well. And essentially, she is in the process of partnering with Cureleaf, which will essentially allow her to bypass the lottery here in Connecticut and obtain a retail cannabis license. And I just wanted to come and kind of, you know, introduce myself to you guys as well as the group, maybe get to know some of you guys, meet some of you guys, and just let you know that we are definitely very interested in having an establishment here in your city of Torrington. Been in touch several times with Jeremy Liner over at head of planning and zoning as well as owners of properties in the area as well as agents as well that are representing some of these properties. So again, I just wanted to come out here to this meeting, and I intend to also be attending the planning and zoning meeting, which I'm aware that there are not public comments permitted at that meeting on Wednesday. But I wanted to attend that as well and formally introduce myself to Mr. Liner. And again, we are actively pursuing locations in your town. And I know everything is still kind of up in the air, but I just wanted to come out and say hello and let you know that we are definitely interested in having a location here in your town. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Last call. More public comment? On the record, oh, I'm sorry, while you're coming up, I had a request from one of the council members that was participating via Zoom. I think you were stating your name as you were walking up, but your name again for the record?
Sure, my name is, first name Eric with a K, last name is Wolfgang hyphen Pinto.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, come on up. Name?
Michael Woodwick, 90 Sunset Lane in Torrington. I am a 49-year-old skateboarder. Still skateboarding, was at one of the Park and Rec meetings, just listening in and just wanted to offer my assistance if needed, as needed. I've got, you know, 30 years of knowledge, still skateboard, still active. I understand what cities and towns go through. The evolution of skateboard parks in Connecticut used to be, there was a lot of private companies that would come to towns and cities. They were very well, they'd be like, hey, we've got this, ABC. Most, a lot of towns would put down asphalt. They would drop ramps on top of them. It was very easy turnkey. And it could solve the issue. Over time, as you'll see, is when, I'm a big advocate of please do not pave and put ramps on top again. Down the road, we could talk specifics. The ramps sink into that asphalt. You can see it statewide, you can see it nationally. The ramps here, in certain spots, are pretty dangerous now because they've sunk in. There's a divot at the bottom. There are some kids who fall. They don't understand why they fell, nor do their parents. The kids, the parents think it was like the kids' fault or something like that. But if the town, you know, Park and Rec decides to move forward, I'd be happy to work with them. There were some talks of being able to make a smaller skateboard park with smaller obstacles. And I just want, I wasn't able to say at that meeting, whether it's small or big, you know, it will attract the older kids. There was talk about dividing, you know, but if you make a smaller park, it's going to attract the older kids also. At the same time, you know, here in town and other areas, for the most part, the kids who use the skateboard park, those kids are good. It's the kids who are kind of passing by, you know. And I've seen it over the last 10 years here. The kids who actually skateboard aren't the kids screwing around. They're, most of those kids are not leaving garbage behind at the park. It's their acquaintances. It's the kids coming by, you know, who end up kind of causing problems. At the same time, the, you know, the park over there, depending on how it's designed, could fit in. At the same time, I'm also an advocate about possibly having two to three different smaller parks or different parks positioned around town. There was talk about, I did not know about the Armory location behind on the old tennis courts there. That is an interesting location to be considered. Just the fact that if something's built there, the Park and Rec could then offer possibly add to their curriculum with skateboard camps and stuff like that instead of just doing, you know, traditional summer camps or whatever, baseball stuff, soccer stuff. Kind of interesting to have it there. I know that there's no perfect, perfect solution, but I just, you know, wanted to come to this meeting, say hello, and, you know, leave my name and information. And I'm happy to, you know, work with the town and just kind of assist and kind of answer those complicated questions. And, you know, ultimately, my interest is just to have the best result. You know, the days, you know, the days of having a, you know, penitentiary fence around your skateboard park is kind of, you know, that's kind of mellowed out locally and nationally. There's no reason to, you know, put, you know, 10 to 30 grand into a penitentiary fence around the park. But anything I can do, please, I'll leave you with information. Be happy to help out and, you know, try to navigate the waters from an old guy, you know.
I appreciate it.
Sharon Wagner, 178 Circle Drive. I wasn't going to say anything, but I was listening to this gentleman. And I had a great conversation with a former student of mine. He lives in Detroit now. He's 36 years old and still skateboarding. I have a picture of my husband trying to skateboard. John tried to teach him when he was 17. It was quite hilarious. But I've always had a soft spot in my heart for my kids, my students who were skateboarders and snowboarders. So a couple, maybe a week ago, I drove by the high school and decided to go in and drive it and look in to see the skateboard park. It is so deteriorated. So I went onto the city website and I looked at the pictures under Torrington Parks. Then I did a Google search for skateboard parks. And Torrington's park comes up first and it's supposed to be the best. And the pictures belie the situation. John was talking to me about the skateboard parks that he still uses it out in the Midwest. And ours just look dangerous when you look at them. I mean, it looked dangerous to me because I wouldn't skateboard if you paid me. But I think we could do a much better job, safety reasons. I think we could have a more up-to-date skateboard park. And I'm hoping that when Parks and Recreation starts to really look at this, it will not be just storing away what's there, but making something that's going to be more appealing. We had a young man, 29, I believe he was, who spoke at the Parks and Recreation meeting a couple of weeks ago, who still snowboards with his father. I mean, his father snowboards with them. I mean, this is, our visitor tonight is a great example of the number of people who still skateboard, even if they're not teenagers. And I think this would be a great addition to our Parks and Recreation if we did it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Still open to the public for comment? Right, saying, hearing none. I'm going to move on to item two on the agenda. This is just a presentation, doesn't require council action. About five or six weeks ago, we had a a brief presentation through our Public Works Department on the improvements that Frontier is going to be making to its fiber optic. We decided at the time that it probably really would benefit the entire council to hear what those improvements are and how they impact our residents, our resident users and the area in general. So I will turn this over.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Town Council, thank you for your time. My name is Michael Chaketti. I'm Vice President for Government Relations for Frontier Communications. I have a brief PowerPoint, which I promise will be brief, which I will run through quickly. And then, but feel free to jump in and ask any questions. And then, you know, happy to answer plenty, as many questions as you have. As the mayor said, we had a, we had a meeting with the mayor and I believe there's city engineering and the police department as well a couple of weeks ago, talk about this. And she asked that we come in and make this presentation to the council, which we are happy to do. Just a quick, before I get started, just a very, very brief background. Frontier Communications came into the state in 2014 for simple purposes, essentially bought the SNET product from AT&amp;T. And SNET, as you know, has been around forever. So we are now the successor to SNET. You know, that, that transition was a little bit rough, I'll say. It was, it actually, I came in after that, but. And then we came in sort of at a really, really tough time in the telecommunications market. You know, people were dropping their landlines. Even people are starting to cut the cord on cable. And we came in just at a very tough time, faced some significant headwinds, ended up entering into a structured bankruptcy, bankruptcy, excuse me, in 2020. Came out in 2021. We were able to get about $10 billion in debt off our books. And really, but really came out as a different company. And our focus now is fiber optic-based internet services. So instead of being the old-fashioned phone company, we're now looking to the future to provide the best and highest quality internet service and using the best available technology, which is fiber optics. And so as a result of that bankruptcy, that restructuring, we have a new CEO, new Board of Directors, new executive team. And the focus now really is fiber optics. And we're looking to, over the next five years, pass 10 million homes with fiber optics across our 25-state national footprint, Connecticut being the top priority state for us. Okay, you actually can jump to the next slide. Thank you. So what are we going to talk about quickly today? We're going to be upgrading fiber to the premise throughout, not through the entire city, but through a good portion of the city. We're going to pass about 11,700 single-family units or small business units. And we're defining single-family units as anything with four families or under in a single location. And small business is just your typical small business. So we'll be able to serve either one of those two. I'll come back with anything over five and over in terms of the number of apartments or units. I'll come back and discuss that later. At least for now, that's what we're focusing on and we'll be able to pass over 11,000 units in the city. Fiber, one of the benefits of fiber is that it's essentially future-proof. Your only, your capacity is only limited by the electronics you have at either end. Once that fiber is in place, you can continue to upgrade the electronics essentially forever. Right now, in fact, we just announced that we went from 1 gig maximum speed to 2 gig maximum speed. So right now, we can, we have a residential and small business offering of 2 gigs. That is the first mass marketed 2 gig bit offering that we've seen, certainly in Connecticut and essentially national. And the majority of the work that we're going to be doing is going to be in the existing infrastructure, either aero-ly, aerially, excuse me, or underground. So one of the, and I'm going to run through this very quickly. The benefits, one of the benefits of our network is 100% fiber from our central office over on, was it Prospect Street? All the way to the end unit. Fiber optic requires very little electricity along the way. It's passive, meaning there's no power supply needed in between our central office and the homeowner. You're going to get the capacity to connect to multiple devices at the same time with these gig speeds. Once the fiber is in place, there are national studies that show that that raises the property value of those individual properties because of the, because of now the internet offerings that are available. We have, as I said, we have speeds up to, you know, up to now to 2 gigabit speeds. And then, you know, one of the things, you know, as students or, and folks are working from home now, this gives them the capacity to do both. So, you know, when we were at the height of the pandemic, I was working from home. I had three kids at school and home. I'm on Frontier Fiber where I live. And we are all able to stream live with absolutely no interruptions at all. Okay, this is just some of the more benefits. Very quickly, again, one of the things I'll point out on this slide, with the fiber, because we're 100% fiber from our central office to the location, there's no sharing of that as there are, as there is with cable companies. When cable companies provide internet access, that, that network is shared. So when everyone gets out of work at 5 o'clock and everyone jumps on the internet, you're going to see those speeds start to slow down. With our, with our technology, everyone has a dedicated line from our central office to the home. So you will not see those, those speeds slow down. You're going to get what you pay for all the time. Okay, so one of the things we're looking for when we talk to our communities, we want to talk about permitting, which we did talk with the mayor about in the engineering department. They've been very accommodating. The other things that we wanted to talk about were, are there any city projects that we can help with? You know, as we're looking at, as you're looking at connecting schools, libraries, town buildings, you know, we're happy to work with the town on those type of projects. Additionally, as we look to larger apartment buildings, those, those five units and up or large condominiums. If there are special projects in town where, you know, you want to upgrade internal wiring to be able to carry those speeds, there is state money available to help with that. So we'd be happy to partner with the town as we're looking at those, you know, larger, older apartment buildings that don't have the internal wiring that can, that can handle a modern, you know, the modern internet speeds that are out there. Just a quick background, as I mentioned, you know, the only thing I'll highlight here, you know, as the successor to SNET, we still have a lot of folks, our employees that live and work in Torrington. So, you know, we're going to be here for the long term. We're not going anywhere. So, you know, we want the town to feel confident that any issues that come up, any problems, we're going to be here to help work through those and resolve them. You know, we're co-owners of the telephone poles with EverSource, so it's not like we can just pick up all the phone, you know, the telephone poles and walk out of state. We're going to be here for a while. So this is just a quick pictorial of how the system works. It starts at our central office. And then from there, we run feeder cables out to the various neighborhoods that we're serving. There's, there's a fiber distribution hub, and that's in the picture too here. That serves the neighborhood. And I'm going to, I'm going to show you a picture of those in a couple of slides. But then from there, there are smaller interconnect fiber terminals that are pole-mounted or line-mounted. And then from there, the fiber goes into your home. And then in there, you, you know, you can, once, once it's in your home, you can do your Wi-Fi or have items directly connected into your modem, however you want to set it up. And I'll leave you with this, and we sent this to the mayor's office as well. This is more for the engineering side and the police side. But, you know, I'll leave it with you folks as well. You know, as we're doing this construction, we wanted to make sure that you had the right people to reach out to in case of any issues that come up. You know, there'll be a lot of trucks rolling around, a lot of schools of fiber. You know, sometimes things happen, they park on the lawn, whatever. We want to make sure that we're there to fix any of those issues. So we have our, our internal folks with engineering and construction that are there to, with their cell phone numbers as well. So if any issues come up, you can reach out to them. We also have a vendor that's helping us with the construction park side. And David Martin is the contact there. That is also his cell phone. You can reach out to him as well. I will leave you also with a couple of my business cards. I'm not on this list, but if there's any issues that come up and for whatever reason, these folks can't help you, I'm always happy to help. And even beyond that, I'll say, just stepping away from this, this project for a second. If there's any issues that come up with Frontier, you know, please feel free to reach out to me. If you've got constituents that are having billing problems or for whatever reason, they got service problems and customer service isn't helping. Like I said, please feel free to escalate it to me. I'm happy to look into them and take care of them. I'd rather jump on it right away than let them sit out there. So I'll make sure everyone has my business card before I leave. So this is a picture of the fiber distribution hub that I mentioned earlier. These will be out in the field, mounted on poles where we have aerial services. They're, they're much smaller than the, the boxes that AT&amp;T had used in the past. They were called VRADs. You know, they were about the size of a refrigerator. They had a power supply and a battery backup. These, these boxes are completely passive. There's no power supply, there's no battery. They are much smaller. They're about 30, 36 inches high. They're about as wide as a pole. As you can see from the picture on the left, just about as wide as a pole. And then about 20 inches or so deep. And the picture on the right, there are times when we can, when it's necessary to mount them higher. Because as you can see from that picture, you know, that pole is located right in the middle of the sidewalk. So we wouldn't want to mount that at walk-up height because it would become an obstruction for folks walking, riding their bikes or whatever. Under, under state law, we are required to notify abutting property owners before we place these. So we send a certified registered, registered letter, excuse me, to property owners, you know, on either side, across the street, make sure that folks know it's there. They can object if they want. We usually, usually want, if they object, we can talk to them, we can work it out. Sometimes we find a different location. Sometimes we mount it higher up, that solves the problem. You know, we're really trying to work with the community as much as possible because we don't want to just roll in there and start throwing things up. People get upset with us because frankly, I want them as customers. Once, once we're up, I want those people to have a good impression of Frontier because I want to steal them as customers. So like I said, we've probably put up maybe 2,000, 2,500 of these across the state. And really, we've only had a handful of objections that we couldn't resolve. But most of them, like I said, we've moved boxes, we've talked to folks, we've worked it out because, like I said, we want to come in as a good corporate partner into that neighborhood. You may see some of this, that, that, that box on the left-hand side is called an aerial splice box. So as we're, as we're running cable and before everything is finalized, we'll have, we'll have those up. And then what will happen is our splicing trucks will come. They'll take that actually down, bring it into the truck where they do the fiber splicing and then place that back up. So you may see some additional, you know, those across the city as we're doing those bill, this build. But these are, these are line-mounted, so they're not as big, so they don't require the notification requirements of the box. And here's the, sort of the saving the best for last, our price point. I'm really not sure how we're making money off of this, but this is, this is the price point we're offering. For, for gig services, we're at $60 a month. And for, if you don't want a gig, if you want to, you know, go a little bit lower, we're offering 500 over 500 for $39.99. So, I mean, pretty amazing prices for, for the level of speed and the quality that you're going to get. You know, one of the other benefits of fiber, it is much less susceptible. You know, one of the other benefits of fiber, it is much less susceptible to weather than copper. Copper is, is, you know, especially some of the older copper that we have. You know, it's, it's very susceptible to weather. It requires a lot of power to keep it operational. When it's damaged, it take, it is a lot more difficult to repair it than, than fiber. So, really, the idea is at some point, we're going to transition to one hundred percent fiber and hopefully retire a lot of our copper services. We're not doing that yet, but that's the idea in the future. But still, at this price point, I mean, it's really, you know, really, we're trying to get folks to migrate from the copper over to the fiber. So that's, that's my presentation. As I said, I promised to be fast. But I'm happy to answer any questions that folks may have. I also have, it's not very well defined, but I have a map of where we're building initially, which I can show to you. I can't leave it because for proprietary purposes, you know, if I turn it over, it becomes ethylable. So, but I'm happy to show you, we're building, and I'll, I know you can't see this. We're building in mostly in the southern part of the more densely populated areas of the city right now, for phase one. And then other phases as they come in the future will expand that out to other parts of the town.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Yeah.
Councilwoman.
A few things. Are you, I'm not sure how this business model works. Do you have exclusive rights to fiber within Torrington? Is it like cable? No?
No, we, we have, I mean, any, any company, once they get certified to, to provide service in Connecticut, can attach to the poles or, you know, place services in, in the conduits. So we, we don't have exclusive rights to do it. We already have facilities on the poles. And as I said, we're co-owners of the poles. So it's, it's a little, little easier, easier for us to get our, our product out there quicker. But, you know, there are other, other companies are more than welcome to, you know, to come up and, and, and lay fiber across the town as well.
Well, competition is always good.
That's right.
If a competitor comes in and wants to do, how do they, how do they manage the, I mean, how do they get access to both?
So there's, there's a process laid out by the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, PURA. They lay out a pole attachment process. You know, they, they, well, first they have to get certified by PURA. You know, make sure they're a reputable company so that, you know, I don't tomorrow, I'm going to buy some fiber and start throwing it up myself. Once, once they're, they're certified, there's a pole attachment process. They apply for a license to go up on the poles. It's that, that, that application is reviewed by the pole owners. In this case, it would be Frontier and EverSource. Then we, we find them a location on the pole and then they, they, you know, they can construct, you know, their fiber on the poles.
When you say fiber source, you say Frontier and EverSource. Do you co-own all or do you own this, Frontier owns some and EverSource or do you co?
The, 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 most of them, I'd say, you know, well over ninety-eight percent of the poles are co-owned. There may be some individual poles here and there that are individually owned for, for certain reasons, like if there's, you know, usually those are on private property. So EverSource may place a pole to get power to a building. But, you know, a good ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the poles in the public right of way are jointly owned by Frontier and EverSource. Now, and this is getting maybe too into the weeds, so just.
No, well, I, I get, to that point then, is, let me ask you this. Is Frontier subsidiary of EverSource?
No, no, we're two separate companies. Completely separate.
Happened to own the.
Yeah. So, so this, this, this goes back decades where, you know, because we were both providing services on the poles. And then, you know, S N E T had some poles, ever, or, you know, C L M P at the time had some poles. And, you know, as a, as a way to make it more efficient to operate the poles, you know, the, the decision was made, we would jointly own the poles. But each pole has a custodian. So, you know, although the pole itself is jointly owned, either Frontier or EverSource are responsible for the maintenance of that.
Understood. Okay.
Individual pole.
Okay. All right. Yeah. And, and once again, if, if another, if another entity wants to come in and use those poles, they have to get approved, they have to go through that process. Can you deny, can you or EverSource deny them access to poles?
No, I mean, I mean, they, they have to go through the process and, and, but once they go through the process, no, we cannot deny them access to the poles. And that's federal law.
Okay.
Not just state law, it's also federal law.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your coming out. Yeah, if you want to spend a moment just to show them where.
Sure. Thank you. At least we're not asking you to generate.
Thank you. All right, while that is being circulated and then returned, I will move into item three. I will entertain a motion to enter into a tax incentive agreement as described in the Economic Development Director's memo dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-two for certain real property and improvements located at one twenty-nine Main Street in accordance with the City of Torrington's tax incentive policy. I'll move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. I will ask Rista if she could just try to bring Eric up too.
No, you go. No, you go.
So you have my memo, all the details. This is Mark Purbeck from Torrington Savings Bank, and I will turn this over to him to tell you a little bit about why Torrington Savings Bank is making this request.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for having us here tonight. So as part of our process to expand the bank, which is, over the last few years, been growing much quicker than it had for the previous decade even. We had an opportunity to purchase the location of the, of eighteen Basin Street, the former Gates Cleaners Building, to try and turn that into some usable office space that was much needed to move people to appropriate workspaces. And also help solidify the bank's position in downtown Torrington for, for many years to come. So we, we were fortunate to be able to work with a group of architects and contractors who were able to put together a, what we felt was a good repurposed use of that, of that property, including doing a very detailed cleanup of the environmental concerns that, that plagued the site, being a former dry cleaner. One of the things that we, we decided was important for, for us and for our employees was to remediate the site to residential standards, just to, to be a good corporate citizen and to do the right thing and, and make that property very usable and repurposable without any end user land restrictions. And, and we're fortunate that we were able to do that. We didn't just end with the eighteen Mason property. We did expand many of the improvements into the twelve Mason Street side of the one twenty-nine Main Street property. To try and bring that up to current standards and building codes and also make it flow much more easily between the two properties so that the employees felt like it was, it was one, one large building. The project, as you can imagine, with environmental cleanup was not inexpensive. But again, we felt that it was, that it was our responsibility and our duty to be good corporate citizens and try to do the best that we could with the cleanup of the property and also the presentation of the property, making it fit in with the, with the streetscape. And so as we work through that process, it, it is going to provide us with a number of new employee opportunities. We've got space for expansion. And as you can imagine, with the highly regulated banking industry, we're always having to find new folks to fill new roles to help us meet those challenges presented by the federal and the state banking commissions. And, and this will help allow us to do that.
Thank you, Mark. Are there questions?
I, yeah, I have a question. So normally a business would come to the council for a tax amendment prior to doing any construction. So why did that not happen?
So that, that was more of our misunderstanding. Our, our interpretation was that we would file the application to coincide with the completion of the building. And when I had reached out to Rista to ask about that process, she had said that the typical path would be to complete the paperwork at the beginning of the process. We thought we would, we would submit for going forward. I mean, obviously we're not looking for, for anything going back, but we, we did want us to, to approach the council and ask if it was something that you would be interested or, or willing to, to do for us.
Other questions?
What are the terms of the abatement?
So the payment would be a two-year abatement. So it would be in year one, twenty-five percent of the increased assessment would be taxed. And then the second year, fifty percent. And by year three, they'd be paying tax on the full assessed amount.
What does that come to in that estimated absolute cost?
I know, Rista, I, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that is in my, it's impossible to read. But the increased value is nine hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Just add another zero on that letter.
Yeah.
It says ninety, nine hundred and seventy-six. It actually says ninety-seven thousand, but I know you mean.
Right. So if we give the mill rate was to stay the same over the two years, it would be an estimated savings of eighteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. And I just, you know, the original assessment in my memo was one million, one eighty-five. It's already gone up to three million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand. That increase would only be that, that nine seventy-six over those two years, not going back to that million dollar number. There's already been that increase and then starting at that point.
Yeah, my, my only comment is one, congratulations. I mean, what you've done to clean up that property, which I can only imagine being a dry cleaner and knowing the previous owner. Now, it was a challenge. And I think, I don't usually like tax abatements, you know, particularly after the fact or ever. But I do think you have been a great corporate partner to the community and been here for many, many years. Having particularly the, the value of the property increased as it has, I think, is complimentary to, to what you've done architecturally as well as, you know, so I'm, I'm going to support this, but I do think it's reasonable over the period of time.
Other questions or comments?
I will support this largely the same argument that Councilwoman Rowett is using, meaning I, I am not a fan of tax abatements, but given the fact of recent, which is why I assume that there's a delay in the ask here for recent history of giving tax abatements to outside interests who have, who are not local, who have no history of, in this city. I think it is only fair to give consideration to businesses that have been an integral part of our city for, for generations. So I'll support it on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. To that point, I would add Torrington Savings Bank is actually one of the lenders on the Penrose project. So their commitment to the community also extends to what they do to support development in this community. And I would also add that the city has already demonstrated quite a bit of investment in this project because much of the cleanup that Torrington Savings Bank undertook was the result of the grant application that the city chased to help them determine what that contamination was prior to property acquisition and set them up for success with this development. So.
The city was a great partner through that process to get the D E C D and DEEP involved to, to secure the grant money. We didn't own the property at the time, so we were able to work with the city and the current owners of the property at that time to secure the grant money, to do the testing, to find out what extent of remediation was going to be required. So that was very much appreciated by everyone at Torrington Savings Bank.
So community partners from the get-go on this project. Other questions or comments from the council? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will extend an invitation. If any of you have not had an opportunity to walk through the building and would like to, please feel free to reach out. We would love to have you come in and, and take a look.
Thank you again. All right, we're moving into item number four. I'll entertain a motion to adapt resolution number one, four, three, two, two, eight for a two million dollar Brownfield grant application for Seventeen North Street. For reference purposes, this is the Torrington Company standard plant. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. I hear it. Councilman Minichia. And a second.
Second.
Second from Councilman Waldron. All right. Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Item six, moving into ARPA funds, community impact grants and partnership projects. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city to proceed with the community impact grants and partnership projects as described in Economic Development Director's memo dated April. Did I? I'm sorry. Five, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ad hoc ARPA advisory committee members to include Councilwoman Anne Rowett, Board of Finance member Lorraine Pesky, Board of Safety member Molly Spino, Board of Education member John Kisco, Park and Rec Commissioner, Casey McKenna. Went a hold off on Casey McKenna. I did not hear back from him as to whether he wanted this appointment. So I'll leave it at that and leave a blank for representation by Park and Rec Commission and representation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So for now, the ARPA committee would be as itemized here. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. Are there questions?
Yes, to clarify the motion, please, Mayor. We are approving specifically whom?
An ad hoc committee that would include Councilwoman Rowett, Board of Finance member Lorraine Pesky, Board of Safety member Molly Spino, John Kisco, who is on the Board of Education. And there will be two vacancies.
Okay.
Representation from Park and Rec and representation for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Maybe I should have seen since then.
No.
Okay. I vote for myself.
Item six. I think there's a conflict. Okay, item six, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city to proceed with the community impact grants and partnership projects as described in Economic Development Director Milak's memo dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Minichia. And the floor is open for questions. If you've read through the memo.
Questions on approving this?
Yes. And Rista can answer.
Is there going to be a presentation first?
Do you want to just walk through the memo?
So, okay. Through the whole spending plan, we've been talking about these community impact grants and what they can be used for. The idea, and we, we even split it into two separate line items, mini grants, which would be what the proposal here is for ten thousand dollars or less, then larger partnership grants. And those would be, we didn't put a cap on what those could be, but those are going to be projects that are bigger in nature. And then the applicant is bringing more to the table or possibly improvements on city property to help advance their programming. So what I've done in this memo, as I said, eligible applicants can be either nonprofit organizations or for-profit organizations. And they have to, the funding has to be allocated to provide a resource to Torrington residents or to a Torrington business. So this isn't necessarily a situation where somebody's going to get a grant to pay for their rent or. somebody's going to get a grant to pay for their rent or to pay for operating expenses so that they can provide an enhanced or new service to the community in one way or another. And and that will help address some of the the impacts, the negative hardships that we felt for COVID. So that's who the eligible applicants would be, that's the purpose, and then we really wanted to kind of target the purpose a little bit further. So we looked at increasing capacity to human needs, food insecurity, housing insecurity, homelessness. We know that was exacerbated by COVID nineteen. Looking at supporting the travel and tourism industries, which we know were very much impacted by COVID nineteen and was right in the guidance to to support re-engaging Torington's youth, increased childcare capacity, so that helps also with the workforce. I'm getting people back to work right now that that's been limited for a variety of reasons, workforce development, job training, supporting Torington's creative economies in in small businesses, but that's really focused towards the creative economy, address drug and alcohol addiction, and provide mental health and support. There will be, based on the spending plan, another round of grants that comes out directed just to small businesses and nonprofits for those operational expenses, but this program is meant really for that community impact. And so so I guess part of what I'm asking for tonight is to look at those purposes, make sure that you're okay with funding those purposes. There's nothing else you wanted or any of these you don't want. But then also looking at the scoring criteria, the the applications that are ten thousand dollars or less, we're thinking will be just an application submitted, we'll have an application form, ask certain information, rank them, and then say awarded or not awarded. But the applications that are more the larger projects will be more of an iterative process, submit a summary, come talk to the advisory committee because the projects are going to be different scale and different types of projects, so it can be very difficult to say what we need is going to be the same for every project depending on what it is. And then the ad hoc committee will review it, make a recommendation back to this board for final approval. So there's kind of two separate paths, depending on the amount of money you're asking for, but the scoring criteria and the purposes will be the same for any request. If you have other questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if you think we need to add or change this in any way, we can do that. And and the other piece that I just wanted to put out there for timing, as the ad hoc committee is formed, you know, we'll we'll look at have them look at a recommendation to this commission for an MOU with the organization that's going to review the funding and administer the funding, but I really wanted to get this details out to the community so that our community partners can start building their applications. So the deadline is probably going to be several weeks out as we develop the administrative piece behind it, but we're just, I want people to know what we're doing and start developing their applications.
And to that point, we receive phone calls on a daily basis from many of those community partners, you know, such as a Little League, a youth soccer league, our Friendly Hands Food Bank, Torington Pal. There's so much need out there, and especially with the recession hitting us the way that it is hitting us. So this at least gives them, you know, that indication that we are moving forward with these grants. You know, the logistics of actually setting this up, developing the application process is still a little work ahead of us, but with this ad hoc committee, we can start meeting as a committee, develop those, and start making recommendations back to the board.
Oh, are you open to comments?
Please, yes.
Okay. I I think this is terrific as a first draft. I I cannot vote to approve this for two specific reasons that I would like to see addressed. Number one, scoring criteria. Scoring criteria, this is, this is going to drive so many of the decisions, and and I would like to see some refinement here and some more specificity, meaning I find it, the weighting, the W E I G H T I N G of of the point system here seems to be slightly or somewhat off, I don't want to say slightly, somewhat off to me, in in this sense. You want to give, you know, a significant weight to applicants having connections to the community, which is all well and good, but that should not be, in my opinion, twice as important as directly addresses an economic or community hardship that was exacerbated or caused by COVID nineteen, which to me is the precise first definition from the federal government of what this money is supposed to be spent for. I I just, I'm looking for results to cut to the chase here. What I want from this ten million dollars is to be able to look down the road, six months, nine months, two years from the road, and say, here's something that didn't exist before that we got for this ten million dollars, that we can sell to people who are looking to move to Torington, sell to businesses that want to relocate here. You know what I'm saying? And with, in within that context, it's much more important to me that that whether or not this is done by local people, which I'd love to put money in local people's pockets, I surely do, but I don't want that to be to outweigh what the project is and what it can do for our city. You know, I I think that's, I think that skews the wrong way in terms of getting the best results for this big chunk of money that we have been awarded. So that's number one. Related to that, the ten thousand dollar mini grants, that's, you know, I don't want, I I know you go, I know the committee and the advisory committee will surely make great judgments on that behalf. I would like, I I'm I'm concerned when we say there's, there's ten million dollars out there and there's no cap on the funding for these projects, okay? That to me is a red flag, and what I would like to see, Mayor, is that before, I would like the advisory committee to have the following guidelines, meaning that an application must have at least the following, or or all of the following, proof of concept. Okay, I want to see that on an application. I don't want it coming before an advisory board before there's proof of concept. Can you actually do what you're promising to do? Show us why, show us how it's been done before, and show us you can do it for this amount of money. Number two is, you know, this mayor from our Board of Education worked with so many ridiculous, well, let me back that up, so many poorly thought out programs that that were brought up and funded through education. I would like to see a real rubric for each of these that assesses what is success and what is failure for the project, an evaluation document. Okay, I mean, otherwise, this is all too sloppy and and too loose, and at the end of the day, what are we going to show two years, three years down the road that we deal with this ten million dollars? And and those are the two main areas. So rethinking this scoring criteria somewhat so that, you know, yes, it's important that they be Torington, that the money goes to Torington people, but I would like to see is at least, at least as important that the projects themselves are worthy of doing for Torington. Okay, and and I think you can adjust that by adjusting how you're weighting these points. And 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 the other thing is, why are we giving so much credit for includes collaboration across organizations? Again, it's my feeling that this to me just feels too government-y, and and I'm I'm always hesitant and leery about over-governmentalizing a project. Is it, does that really help us? You know, we all have experiences with committees that are way too big, and almost inevitably, when you have committees that are way too big, the end product suffers because everybody, right, everybody just sort of goes toward the center, goes toward the mean, and you end up with mediocre project after mediocre government project after mediocre government project. It's just built into that process. And I think this kind of invites that. I I mean, if if there's a specific progress, if there's a specific project that would benefit from collaboration across multiple organizations, that to me should be just part of the proof of concept. This will work because this group is already doing that in that group. Do you follow me? I don't think we should just say, well, it's going to involve a whole bunch of people who are, you know, already have their little groups who are doing related things. I don't think that gets us to really good endpoints in 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 accomplishments and things that we can create for Torington. Again, it just feels like too much government, and I would like to sort of maybe not have that as one of the pros of of any proposal, that it does collaborate across many organizations.
Sure. The only thing that I would add for your consideration in in that last thought is it is overly governmental, but that is because we are required to report back to the U.S. Treasury how we expended the funds.
No, I'm sure, Mayor.
So there is, there is a level of accountability that we would have to demonstrate to the to the U.S. Treasury that it was used consistently with what that legislation intended it to be used for. And I think that as far as getting to those impacted, I don't want to say industries, it's not just impacted industries, it's impacted sectors. You know, it's public health, you know, it's mental health, it's education, it's re-engaging the youth, it's so I I think you're right, we can go back and we can work on these. The the first one that you itemized, applicant has established connections to the community. Well, really, we can't give this money to anybody but Torington people. It must be used here in the city. So so I could see where that is something we probably could eliminate and maybe weight these others. I I think when we were, when Rista and I were trying to brainstorm what it is we were trying to establish, is we wanted to make sure that any applicant, well, maybe a Torington entity, maybe a Torington five oh one C three or five oh one C four, has a strong connection to the community. You know, it could be a five oh one C three with an office in Torington, but the public that it serves is in another community.
Okay.
And that was the only reason we were doing that, but we could find another way to get there.
No, this is very literally.
And I know, and I think the other piece I just want to add to that, you know, when I, we talk about collaboration and I, and it wasn't my intention, and and this is why I actually appreciate the second eyes, because you interpret things different than I, sometimes I'm into it so so much. And so the idea of collaboration through this whole pandemic, and as from the day one, we said, you know, we want to grease the wheel, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. So the idea of collaboration was if you want to, I'm just going to make this up, but distribute food, if you have a population that you know needs food and you're going to, you know, apply for a project to help provide food to this organization, we don't need you creating a brand-new food bank. We know, we want you to collaborate with existing resources to make them stronger, to make you stronger, to serve the community. But when I talk about collaboration, it's more about greasing the wheel, supporting the organizations to get to their need instead of, you know, four organizations coming asking for four different food banks. You know, we'd rather make, have them all work together and make our, so 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 I can reward that.
No, the logic is sound. I mean, this is a real, don't get me wrong, this is a really good proposal for how to go about doing this, you know, sort of new venture, a massive grant with some kinds of, you know, federal strings, not state strings, it's a really great, you know, you know, draft of this. I just, again, you you know what I'm saying, I like think, think of of the of the room for your scoring and then, you know, proof of concept, keeping it really results-oriented, so we, at the end of the day, we can look two years and say, yeah, that didn't exist before this way, and it's much better.
I think every conversation I have with Rista ends with that comment, and how are we going to measure the success of this? No, that's my conversation with Rista every time we meet. You know, what are the measurements of success?
Well, that's terrific.
You know, I spent their money, how did, how did we? Yes.
I know you do, so just, I'm just suggesting.
No, I like it.
And I think as we, you know, as we went through a couple of years ago through the Building Healthier Communities Grant that we received, it was kind of that model. We said, hey, this is what we want to do, and we gave a presentation and they said, okay, well, we really want, we get this piece, but we don't, we don't understand this piece. We need more information. We need you to really elaborate on how you're going to do this. We, you know, and so it was a very iterative process, and I anticipate that the ad hoc committee will do that and be very detailed and really drill down. They're comfortable that the proposal will work, but it doesn't hurt to put it in here. I can certainly do that. And, you know, I I can.
You can have the ad hoc committee sit and look through this with that, you know, that external set of eyes, and then bring this back. I think that that way, it's not coming from, you know, the brainstorming that happens in my office.
Those are the people who are going to have to use the tool.
And I think the only other thing that I would add is, just to be clear, that it's not all ten million dollars that is going to be given out.
That was my question. I remember the draft. These particular grants, it's the two point five million.
So five hundred thousand dollars was earmarked for the mini grants, and then one point, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was earmarked for the the bigger grants, so altogether, it was like just over one point seven million dollars, but I'm also thinking that we're not going to do this in one round. We would, you know, split that fund and do two rounds. The first round would be, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the mini grants. Or or maybe we even want to start with a little bit less and, you know, see how that process works for us, and then we can adjust if we need to, but it wouldn't be all the money all at once, let's get it out the door, you know, looking at it, doing it in two just two separate rounds with the two different types of money.
The full ten million, we've already spent some of it already, it's already been allocated, particularly with the draft plan that that you had given us a couple of weeks ago. You know, these have been completed, these ones you want to add, so I understood that these were the projects that would be the approximately two point five million out of this ten million.
Yep.
That's the only reason why I agreed to be on. You know, mostly because this is, you know, touches people's heart, it's a need in the community, and you want legitimate organizations that, you know, have done work in our community, you know, and and have benefited our constituents, so maybe that should have been in the memo, like this is like the amount of money that but I also, in terms of the scoring, it's very similar to state grants. You know, at least, you know, human service grants that are put out, you know, they do that same kind of weighting.
Yeah.
I agree, don't get too complicated because keep in mind, many of these nonprofits have no grant writers. So, you know, I'm hopeful that it won't be a very complicated process for an organization that does good work, and they say it's too much work to apply for ten thousand versus.
And that's the idea, is to try to keep that ten thousand very simple. Now, so we just went through this whole facade grant program.
Right.
And we had very generic criteria, you know, did you meet this, meet this, meet this, and we said, yes, we had no way to score them against each other. So we ran into a situation where we had too many applications and not enough money. We're, who do we pick? You know, they they all meet the criteria. How do we rank them? So that's kind of why I pushed for this scoring criteria or put that in here. But we can simplify it, too. If there was really, you know, just three or four things that you wanted to see, we can make them each twenty-five points or whatever. So it's not so complicated. But I but I do think that having
I agree.
A scoring is.
I think it's very smart to do that, you know, for a whole bunch of reasons, yeah, I think it does require that, and I I'm just offering some tweaks, that's all.
Yeah, and and my comment again is Torington is, having looked at some of the ARPA funding that's going to other municipalities, you know, they're not even doing this. They're not, you know, doing a advisory committee, you know, to review any of the applicants. It's, I don't even know how the, there's resources within those municipalities to distribute the money as I don't want to say honestly, but as
Fairly.
Fairly. But I mean, this is, this is a real compliment, really putting the money where it should be in a very thoughtful process, you know, manner, so anyway, I just want to make sure I understood it, you know, as well, that this wasn't the full ten millions, because some of that money's been identified, and so it's about that two point five.
You know, and of the, that strategic spending plan that the council did approve in concept, in theory, you know, there are still some big sums in there, like we had three million dollars that we were considering or setting aside for communications, the radio systems. Municipalities across the state, actually across the nation, are all struggling with the same thing. It's the, it's the communication, the radio's communication. Well, as our public safety departments get deeper into the weeds on what does that look like, you know, they may not need all three million dollars, in which case we can move some of those funds into these funding opportunities, because the goal is to get it into the community. And the other reason we wanted to establish And the other reason we wanted to establish this ad hoc committee and this, this additional step or layer is because when I looked at the survey results and I saw we had 250 people that responded to a survey out of 34,000 people, it, it tells me that not enough people are paying attention. And that's my other concern is I don't want two years from now, three years from now, four years from now, somebody saying, well, what, what was your process and how are we supposed to know that? So it's, it's every step requires a little more public process that nobody can say there wasn't ample opportunity for me to have some insight or input.
Because I think there needs to be, I honestly, more, I don't want to say marketing, but advertising of the opportunities that are available to the nonprofits in our community. I mean, I don't know how we're going to do that, but I do feel that, you know, they're going to be, you know, needed organizations that, again, I talk about capacity and the resources they have within them to actually write the grant. So.
No, that was definitely something we heard right from the beginning and as we talked to everyone. And, and again, I think with that in mind is kind of why that iterative process, I think will be helpful. So, you know, if you're coming in to ask to, you know, I don't know, purchase a good or a refrigerator or a car or something like that, that's going to be very different requirements than if you're asking to bring in a social worker to help service or provide a service to elderly or a youth. And so to try to lump that all together, but really would just be too complicated and too much, you'd really have to be a grant writer. You're not even asking the same questions. So that, that iterative process is why we've kind of established it that way.
And some of these 501(c)(3)'s are volunteers, you know, I mean, you look at, you know, they maybe established as a 501(c)(3), but they're made up of volunteers.
Which is another, I just, you know, I want to put this out there too, you know, we've, the language is subtle, but you know, we have these impact grants. We're calling the $10,000 grants, or I'll call the other ones projects. If we have a youth league and they need to make $30,000 worth of improvements to a town park or field, well, maybe that's not a grant to them. Maybe we approve that and we manage that money and manage that project. So that's really a true partnership project. It's not necessarily always going to be a grant to the applicant. They're submitting their project to us, we're going to rank them and say, yes, we're going to fund this. And how we fund that will be determined based on the details of that, that project.
So those improvements would actually be done to the desire and design that that organization is seeking. So if it's a question of, you know, lights so they can play from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, you know, and those lights are in a public field, well, it's, they design what the need is, what the improvement is to fit their need. So those are, those are, those are projects we anticipate receiving.
Yep.
Other questions or comments?
Just one question. I don't know if it'd be too much, but is there going to be, and this might be for the ad hoc committee that's being formed? Is there going to be a, a place where we're going to ask for a response for how the impact, what was the impact on it? Like, say it was a social, social organization, social work organization, say, well, we were able to additionally, you know, work with 10 families for six months or something like that because of this grant, just so we have the data.
Yeah, I think we should. I think that will have to be part of the approval, conditions of approval that we, we asked for that data. And I've been talking to a few different organizations that have been managing these grants to get an idea how they do it. And they do condition, if you want your money, you're going to give us data, you know, whatever relevant timeframe, but not just once. Six months out, one year out, three years out, so we can track that impact. Because the other thing is, you know, we have this money to do these programs. If they work and we can document success, we might want to continue to do them. But if we don't know if they work, you know, we won't know if this is something we should continue to invest in. So I think that's a huge piece of what we need to do and I, I think we would make that a condition of approval. And, and, you know, ask for the data that's relevant to whatever that request is.
Not too cumbersome because this, as you were saying, but just something so that we have data that we've, you know, they, this, we were able to service, you know, 10 more families over this period of time, which is, which also shows what our community needs. And not only shows that, that it helped them, but it also shows, oh, wow, we have a big need in this area.
Yeah, and many of those things did reveal themselves through the long-term recovery committee work, you know, from day one. I think that we, I stood that long-term recovery committee up three weeks after the state of emergency was declared. You know, and those meetings were held weekly and then they were held monthly and then they were held quarterly. But those needs didn't really change a whole lot. So we have an idea that the need is still there. And quantifying the need and identifying, did it fill that need, I think is, is going to be a little bit easier than saying, you know, I want numbers, I want to see exactly how many. So I, I think this was really good. This is such a great use of these funds. And I'm looking forward to working with the committee and bringing this stuff back to the board so that you can see these and weigh them and community impact.
So I, to hear what you're saying, and I think, you know, that we have an ad hoc advisory committee, we'll go back and we'll, we'll make some changes to the scoring criteria and the application process. Would you be opposed to putting our purpose of these grants out so, so people can start to know what we're, we're planning to do with it and say, application pending? Or do you want to put a hold on it all till we finalize the scoring?
I think the memo is, is fine. I mean, whether you change, you know, the actual scoring. I don't, you know, if you want to change the language in terms of how, I'm looking at your memo again here, but if that would satisfy the, I'd like to move it forward because this needs to get out there.
If I could offer.
Yeah.
That in general terms, the amount of monies that are available in general terms.
Right.
You know, the mini grants, the community partner projects, grants. In general terms, if we were to do a press release, that way, these people that are waiting, they're waiting for this, you know, this grant round to open up, will have a signal that it is going to happen sooner than later. While we fine tune this, bring it back for.
Makes sense to me.
Then they can, the partners can start putting together their ideas of what they're going to be applying for.
So can we just change the motion that, you know, yes, just as you had indicated, that you basically will communicate to the nonprofit or the eligible organizations, you know, that this funding is available?
Yes.
And maybe put the exact amount of the mini grants versus the.
So it may be, it may be easier to withdraw this motion. That was Councilwoman Ruette and Councilwoman Nidjia.
Yeah, I'll withdraw it.
Thank you. You'll read through it in a second. And a new motion is to authorize the mayor's office to release grant information consistent with the strategic spending plan previously approved.
Yes.
And to bring back to the council revised grant parameters or grants.
I'll move that.
That, all right. Does that hit it? Did you hear that? Okay. Okay.
Make it simple.
So that was Councilwoman Ruette's motion and second again by Councilwoman Nidjia. Any questions on that motion? Excuse me. All in favor? Any post? Motion carries. Item seven. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city to advance an RFQ, RFP, to solicit a consultant to act as the city's workforce navigator, as described in the economic development director's memo dated April 13th, 2022. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nidjia. And questions on this? You will recall this in the strategic spending plan. Yeah, I, you know, before I approved these memos, I probably should have had you put in the amount of money that's being. So in this one, for the workforce.
Well, I, I, I didn't do that in this one because I, so we typically don't release the amount of the funding available in an RFQ and RFP, because then you'll know every RFP or RFQ will come in at that funding level.
Yeah.
So we have a spending plan that we've, we've put in a cap of, which is $150,000. But at, at, once we get the RFQ or the RFPs, that proposal will come back to this council to approve the final dollar amount that we're going to spend on that. So that, I, that's why I didn't add this one, but it would be, you know, consistent with the, that general plan that was approved, which was $150,000. And I think we were hoping for that to be a two or three-year program. And that was over the, the life of, you know, over, you know, the three, the three years that we can spend those funds.
I move the motion.
I have a comment.
So yes, motion was made by Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Nidjia. We're open, the floor is open for comment.
Yeah. I, I just find this too vague, especially the last paragraph. I don't, I mean, for,
So.
For, for a Democrat, I, I, I very much oppose too big government or more government. It, to me, it just has efficiency issues all the time. And I don't know, we're at essentially, we're adding a position to the city and I know it's for two or three years. But we know that these, they have a way of just continuing to, you know, to exist and, and, and we're just, this will, after the ARPA money no longer funds this, then, then the city's going to have to continue. And I don't know why we need a workforce navigator. If people that are already on the city payroll are doing their specific functions, I'm not sure why we need this function.
This would not be, this would not be an employee of the city.
Well, what would it be then?
So this is a consultant, but what we anticipate, and again, just drawing, and I know this is not clear in this memo. So drawing on what we heard from our, all of our partners in the community is from the businesses, we heard workforce is impossible to find. You know, we have, you know, we have 10, 15 openings in our manufacturing site and nobody's applying for it. Or the people that are applying for it can't get to work because there's no public transportation or no vehicle or shift problems.
Don't we have employment agencies?
There are employment agencies, but those employment agencies are not getting down into that detail. Like what's preventing these employees from getting connected to that job? And sometimes it means speaking with the, the manufacturer and saying, well, listen, a third shift isn't working. You know, is it possible that you're really can get this done in two shifts? Or the problem is a third shift, there's no public transportation, no buses are running, you know, 11 o'clock at night. You know, is it possible as a manufacturer, you can bring on some transportation system that provides that employee with, or that shift of employees with transportation? It's also, the things that we heard, the kinds of things that we heard were, you know, they, the manufacturers or these businesses are advertising for workforce through Indeed. That's an online application process. For anybody who's ever tried to fill out one of those Indeed applications, it is ridiculously complicated. You have to create a password. You know, for anybody who's even just gone through the exercise of creating a password, you know, you have to get it verified, they're going to email you, they're going to text you. You know, they're going to send you some, you know, some verification codes. And people give up. They, they give up before they even get to that point. So there are entities, agencies that actually do this stuff pretty well. They don't have enough resources within their agency to do this. Places like New Opportunities, not enough resources.
But traditionally, that would be, that would be the business's job to.
So this absolutely would be the business's job to do that, Paul.
Yeah.
But the problem is, through the pandemic, people went home, they collected unemployment compensation. They received stimulus checks, they became disconnected. And now, two years later, there is a real disconnect that people don't know how to get back into this.
I just remember conversations with, you know, again, when I was on the Board of Education, and we had people define, they weren't educators. They weren't math, science teacher, literacy, they weren't educators. They were kind of working for kids who had semi dropped out and trying to find them jobs. And we were paying them like we're paying math teachers and physics teachers, we're paying these teachers the same amount. And, you know, it seems to me, well, if we're, we already paying for that kind of person, why aren't they doing a better job of that?
So to that point, when we were talking about establishing this
Yeah.
And we talk about funding two or three years, you know, there has to be the measurable success. You know, if, if the RFQ, you know, brings in five applicants and we don't anticipate those applicants being individuals that say, hey, I want to do that job. We anticipate those are going to be agencies that do that job. And it has to, it has to fit all of the, you know, benchmarks that we establish. And in the first year, if they're not hitting those benchmarks, if we're not seeing, you know, 100% connection of employees to vacancies in the work environment, places like commercial selling, Franklin Products, MBIA, I'm trying to think of some of the others.
I hear the nuance. I just don't know what, why we're paying agencies who, their job is to do exactly this thing.
They don't have enough.
So I, I, I'll just, I want to say, you know, so this memo is only a piece of what we're pointing out when we ask for a solicitation. I can't give you the full RFQ, RFP and make it public before we open it up to everybody. So, so there will be like a whole scope of work and all of that that will be outlined in the RFQ and the RFP. But that's not something that you typically even see before we put them out because there's a procurement process in place. But I think, which to your point, these organizations, and there, there's more demand than ever. So these organizations need to increase capacity to help. And these businesses who normally do a lot of this work don't have employees. And so the owners of the companies are either on the floor or doing payroll and they don't have the capacity to go out and then do that, that work that they used to do. So they need somebody to help with like, just like a matchmaker. Say that we have these jobs here and we have these people here and they help bring them.
But how is the consultant supposed to find these people here? Isn't that what the agencies, isn't that literally why they're in the business?
So they will, first of all, break down some of those barriers, like language barriers and technology barriers that, that people may not have access to to access these jobs, but they'll also be out in the community. They may go to.
Woodland Hales, they may go to the housing, you know, where you might have a community room in, in one of our large community apartment complexes. They, they won't have your traditional office space. You know, we may say, you know, job fairs, for instance, is a perfect example. You know, you have a job fair and people come in and they wander around a room and there's 40 people in a room looking for an employee. But the person wandering around the room is really sort of wandering aimlessly. So it's a targeted job fair.
And if that person doesn't speak English.
Is that going to be one of the requirements for the consultant to be mobile, will they?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and so we have all of these qualifications and job descriptions, but the, the goal of that would be to, this would be the goal of that person. And then how we select that person and interview that person, you know, would be all detailed in the RFQ and then brought back to this council for approval.
And I would add that the first step that that job would require is to meet with all of the large employees. The large employers, employers that are struggling to fill vacancies.
So part of what I'm doing is, um, a, a, a business retention expansion program where we're going out and we're really.
Yeah.
Formalizing our conversations with businesses. And this, this organization or, or these people would be very much a part of that. And be coming with me to, to get a handle on what those business needs are, so that they can talk to residents about. What that job entails. And, you know, maybe somebody has half the job and not all the job, there's training opportunities, connecting them to those training opportunities.
Okay. And, and, and so the, again, the wording is just, um. I'm not used to seeing the wording in this way. So in this, in this proposal, what we would be approving as a city council is that. You want to, you want to. Post this as a consultant opening, but the fees, we are not assigning fees to the slot.
They, they.
Define.
They will bid on this. They will say, I'm interested in doing this.
Okay.
And these would be my costs. And this is, and those costs will probably include an hourly rate. You know, some of the resources that they're going to need.
Okay, I, I can support it on that basis. I, I sort of wasn't getting.
So it's a competitive bid.
Right. And we will prove that finally?
Yeah.
Okay. And could I just ask one, again, just, um. Any of these things, I want to, I gotta keep using proof of concept, I'm not sure why that's sticking in my head these days, but, um. The, the, the same criteria we talked about earlier, you know, what can you prove, what, you know, that, that you can do? You know, how do we measure that we're getting our money's worth out of you? Show us what we can expect from you, that you've really thought about the problem, you're not just applying. Hoping to get whatever you're gonna get seventy-five thousand or something. And it's so rubbery about what we expect for that. I, I want them to say, for this amount of money, I can do this.
And so. And those measures of success in this situation, the measures of success isn't necessary that I have connected. You know, sixty people with sixty jobs. Measure of success is, I connected sixty people to sixty jobs and they stayed employed for two years.
Yeah.
You know, it's not because, that's the other problem that a lot of our employers are finding, is they hire somebody. And the state was offering all these incentives, you know, we'll give you a, an opportunity to offer sign-on bonuses. Where people would sign on, get their bonus, work for a month and then disappear. So we're trying to break that down. We're trying to break that cycle and say what we're working is. It's, it's a, a targeted job fair that includes, not only are we working with an employer. But that may even mean I'm taking paper applications to a location to help people fill them out and making those connections.
And this will come from ARPA money, right?
That is all hundred percent.
Okay.
And, and I, I just want to point out too, we, the process that we're using isn't just a straight bid process. It's an RFQ slash RFP process. So the first step will be to make sure the applicant is qualified.
Yep.
And once they're qualified, we'll review those proposals. And it's not just a fee proposal, but a proposal of how they're gonna meet our goal. So we will really drill down to make sure that they're doing what we want to do and, and, um, what they're gonna measure for success and make sure it's the same as what we would measure for success.
All right. Yeah, I, I, on that basis, I'll support it. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? All right, then I'll call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I.
Okay. I am eight. Yeah, I don't know. Can I say who else is on the call?
I know, I couldn't hear it.
It might be a delay, I'm not sure. That was Carrie, I think.
I'm here, sorry.
She looks like she's working out.
She's, she's.
All right, I keep sneezing and blowing my nose. We hear that.
Oh, she's in the park.
Yeah.
Yeah. Literally walking to the next ride, so, but we're good. Talk amongst yourselves and still paying attention.
Okay. I'll call, I'll call item number eight. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report from March twenty twenty-two.
No move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Waldron. All, uh, questions on the report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to release the sewer use liens in Corporation Council's member. Memo dated April eighteenth.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second by Councilwoman Renegia.
Disney, Disney World.
Uh, questions on the memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations to the tax collector and authorize a tax refunds indicated on list dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Renegia. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion. To accept the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Renegia. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries. Item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
No move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Renegia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have, um. We have Attorney Michelle on the call. Anything this evening?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor.
And, um, Rachel, is that on? Okay. Then I'll move into item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor's and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Renegia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll go to the screen and I'll go to Carrie first.
Yeah.
Any comments this evening, Carrie? Did we lose her?
Yeah.
She's in Space Mountain.
Maybe she got on the ride, yeah.
Yeah, she's on Space Mountain right now.
All right. Uh, Councilman, Councilman Oliver.
No, thank you, Mayor. I just hope you feel better.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Yeah.
Did you hear me?
I'm all set, Mayor.
Anything, anything this evening, Councilwoman Renegia?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rouette?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman.
I do have one thing, Mayor.
Yes.
And I, I would like to make one more run up, uh, Skate Park Mountain here. Um, I, I did attend the last parking wreck, uh, commission meeting. And I fully acknowledge and understand the fact that this is their decision. My, I, I would love, this is what I would like to see happen. Um, I would like to do, I, I know they're meeting, a special meeting on Wednesday, I assume, to, to vote on this. I would just like to get in front of them, the, because of the ARPA funding. You know, what troubles me, it's not the, you know, again, my concern is not the kids, the look of all that business, that's not my pri- my primary concern is. Spending money wisely in Torrington. And the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that are earmarked for, what came up at the Park and Rec Commission. I, I'm certainly not in a position to say this, but a number of skateboarders showed up, including this guy who was here tonight, Michael, uh, whatever, his name was Wojcik or something. Um, and they all expressed the fact that this is really not, um, this is really a very outdated park, very outdated park. And it just seems to me, you know, not the wisest use of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to move it from there to there. Um, and what Mario Longabuco said to me, you know, last week, he, or whatever, yeah, probably last week. He said, he's been researching some of this, of what these skateboarders are saying for, you know, a more modern cement-based park. He said, they, they really are not re, you know, terribly expensive. He said, it would be somewhere in the six hundred thousand dollar range to do it, to seven hundred thousand. And it just seems as part of what the ARPA funding is, reengage Torrington youth, sports and activities. It seems to me a much wiser use of that earmark three hundred and sixty-five. To apply it with some ARPA money and somewhere, whether it's Fusage Park or someplace else, to build a modern skate park. Which goes to my criteria for ARPA money, which is to say, two, three, four years down the park, we got something out of this ARPA money, really new. Especially downtown and, and therefore engages kids in a way that's very close to the teen center. Um, uh, a, a Jerry Carbone made the remark at the Park and Rec Commission, that Fusage Park is the gem of Torrington, which it is. And it's, we all know that, you know, resurf, again, if, if the decision was to go to Fusage Nature, would resurface. The parking lot and then, um, whatever, build the park there. It seems to me that if we applied some of this ARPA money to a really. Specific, objective facility for Torrington that was new and modern and sellable to. People, families and looking for that, uh, it would, it would solve a number of problems. The high school building committee that has their problems with moving the old park, you know, in front of the school, it solved that problem. It would solve the problem of the skateboarders themselves, David Oliver mentioned at the last meeting, he spoke to a number of these people, they want it bigger and better. And, um, I think we've got some money available now. And I think that would be a wise use of. ARPA money tied to a wiser use of the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to move it. So I'm wondering if we could get a meeting in front of, just this. Co, you know, the ARPA money is under our control, City Council. So if we put the two of us together, they own the decision, but we have control of the money on our side.
So just to be clear.
Yeah.
There is no money earmarked for the moving of this park. I know the building committee keeps referring to a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Earmark. They cannot earmark any funds spent on any project off-site. So that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that they keep talking about.
Yeah.
Was actually a building permit fee. That is considered, uh, it's a, a legitimate payment that qualifies for school construction. And for school construction grant reimbursement. When they pay that permit fee, it goes into general revenue. So they can't, I know there's a lot of discussion about, but we're paying three hundred and sixty-five thousand to move this, they're not. That would be a violation of school construction grant rules. I'm sorry.
Well, it, how much is, what is the number to actually move it from where it is to best needs?
So from what I understand, the, um, the physical moving of the equipment is somewhere around forty thousand dollars.
Right.
And, um, I think Park and Rec has those numbers better than I do.
Yeah.
The, um, the cost of moving the park is not the big, the big nugget. It's actually preparing the base for the park.
Okay.
So based on the meeting that I had with, um, Mario Longabuco and Ed Aaron last week. With representation from the Park and Rec Commission. Uh, the, um, director of the Park and Rec Commission and our Public Works Director. That base, that needs to be laid. What do we know? They know that, um, the, um. Uh, basketball court needs to be repaired. And the long-term goal at that park was to have two outdoor basketball courts. Now what they can do is, they can do the repairs, lay the asphalt, lay the, you know, the pavement. Create that pad site for the basketball courts. And for forty thousand dollars, take what is considered to be very good equipment, you know, it has some dings and dents. But it hasn't reached its end of life use yet. And they can move that over to that park for the time being. With a longer term goal, and everybody agrees, the longer term goal is to create that skate park. That's what the Park and Rec Commission said they'd like to do. That is state of the art, that does create, um, does. Create a destination for people outside of the city of Torrington. That price that, um, was presented to you was also presented in this meeting. It's dated information. Um, the cost of concrete, um, has gone up. Uh, the cost of excavation of the site, because that is a bowl, you know, you drop into it. Um, has to be factored into all of that. Um, and that also requires a site location. Where that excavation and construction can happen. So. The, there was no decision made in the meeting in my office last week. My role was just to facilitate the meeting. I brought the building committee representatives to the table. The Park and Rec representatives to the table. And everything was put out there with some clarifications about some of the misinformation that has been coming out of a very emotional argument. You know, to go to a meeting and be told the Park and Rec Commission was quite concerned that. That if the, the shovel wasn't in the ground by June, the project was gonna blow up and we were gonna lose the project and eighty-five percent reimbursement. That is patently untrue.
I know, I know.
That's patently untrue. Uh, the, um. The other, uh, uh, question that came up was, a Park and Rec Commissioner wanted to know. How did we lose control of, to quote, of our parking lot? Because that parking lot is part of the Elise Best Park. And it belongs, it falls under the jurisdiction. And they wanted to know how they lost control of that. And it reminded them that they have not lost control of that park. They still have control of it. It's going to be used essentially the same that has been used for the last fifty years. You know, with school parking during the day, park parking in the evening, weekends and summer. So we sort of dispelled some of the misinformation that was being put out there. Title nine was the other.
It's because you lose the women's volleyball court.
It is not a women's volleyball court.
What's that?
That is not a women's volleyball court.
It's a volleyball court that's used properly by women. Is that fair to say?
It's, it's, yeah, that is, it's not a title nine. And, and, and everybody at the table agreed, there's no title nine violation. In losing that volleyball court. And so my responsibility was to bring everyone together. Make sure everybody had their, their information. To dispel any facts that were, uh, presented from the speaking public. Um, that confused the Park and Rec Commission, um, which I've done. And from there, I wasn't aware that they had scheduled a meeting yet. Um, but that's their role. So two things, another, so another bit of misinformation. That three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars cannot be earmarked for the use of this project. That is a violation of school construction, um, uses. That is a building.
That's not what I heard.
I know. I know.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that's the problem. That, um, that three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and this board agreed to waive all but three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. In, um, building permit fees. As a matter of fact, they need to come to us again. And ask for another waiver of building permit fees for the other twenty million dollars a project. Um, and Board of Finance did the same thing. They took action on the waiver of everything but three hundred and sixty-five thousand. In the meeting that we had last week, uh, information on the cost for laying new pad site for basketball courts. Um, which could, in the short term, be used for this skateboard, uh, equipment, is about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. But the cost, and at the end of that, you know, if this is just a two-year thing and, uh, you know, a, a group of. Highly motivated skate park enthusiasts, you know, come up with a plan for building this. You know, this really state of the art. You know, um, modern skate facility where you're dropping into a bowl and your ramps and everything are built in cement. Um, comes out of the ARPA. Um, no harm, no foul, because we still have two, a space for two basketball courts. At what the Park and Rec Commission has been trying to develop as a multi-use, um. Recreational facility at Elise Best Park.
So there is, in the newest, latest for best, there's gonna be two courts, basketball?
That was always the goal.
Oh, okay.
It was always the goal, you know, and as a.
And the skate park, right. So be skate park to basketball courts and then.
This, no. So right now, and I don't know what they're, I don't, honestly, no decision was made in that meeting with me. There was no discussion about where they were. The Park and Rec Commission took the information, said, okay, we think we have all the information we need. We now need to present it to the rest of the board. So it's in their court, no pun intended.
Yeah.
Um, but just to be clear, there are no funds from the building project earmarked.
That could be applied? There's no way that could be?
No, that's general revenue. A building permit fee is considered general revenue. And it hasn't been paid yet.
Right.
And I'm filled up. A hundred and eighty-five million dollar project.
$185,000 project and we're, um, anyway.
Well, they're concerned, you know, again, uh, the building committee, I mean, I sit in, I'm not, I'm ex officio, I'm not part of that committee, but I do sit in and I know their concern, you know, especially with Mr. Longabuco, who's a Realtor. He talked about curb appeal, you know, and he's worried about curb appeal to the $180 million new high school. But that was the, the argument that stuck with me is the huge cost of moving it versus putting, and then the number that was given for what it would cost to build new was, you know, somewhere that would have been a reasonable, um, chunk of ARPA money.
So based on the square footage of what we have over there, it's, it's about 14,000 square feet of park. To build a 14,000 square foot, um, skate park would be closer to $900,000. And again, those were, um, costs that were not current costs with price escalation because of pandemic and supply chain. But, you know, I don't know where they are with all of this. Uh, I, I do believe that the two commissioners that were there listened in earnest to the concerns. They were very, very interested in what the concerns were. And curb appeal is absolutely, I can understand that concern. And the only thing that I would add to that, um, from, from a perspective that I have to deal with every day, with every conversation that I have with infrastructure improvements or investments in properties is we are a city and we do need to provide a diverse offering of not only recreation, a diverse offering, uh, we have to meet the needs of all of the community. And if this was Goshen or Litchfield, you know, or communities where they could be far more selective, um, because there's a smaller demographic being served, I would say, yeah, we have the luxury of saying, no, not here. But the, um, exercise that was presented to the, to, um, building committee representatives that were present was a full review of every park and every open space that falls under the jurisdiction of the Park and Rec Commission. And the reasons it wouldn't work in any of those spaces. So even if the decision in the Park and Rec Commission is, we're going to go ahead and build a new facility, state-of-the-art, that's what we know will not only serve our community, but then brings in outsiders to the community, it also would include property acquisition. So those are the challenges that were, that they're weighing, you know, all of their decision. No, I, I greatly appreciate, I appreciate the patience of everybody.
Mayor, Carrie got kicked off.
Oh.
Heather here, and her comment is, uh, only that I am in favor of a joint meeting with Park and Rec to discuss the redoing the skate park rather than moving the old one.
Okay.
I, I have no interest in, you know, having that. I feel like that is the, that is the role of the Parks and Rec Commission, but it's not our role. And nor should, should it be. So without having any emotion to, you know, to the interests of the park or without the park, we have a commission to do that and we can go to the commission meetings and voice an opinion if there's, you know, public comments. But, uh, anyway.
No, but my sense again was that we are in control of the ARPA money. And if there was $365,000, which seemed like a big chunk of money to move in, again, an outdated skate park that didn't serve the skateboarding community, then it was a very valid discussion to say, we can give you some ARPA money, let's build something new. But if that $365,000 is really off the table.
It is, it is. The, the building committee cannot utilize any of their school funds, the 180 million, or any of the portion of the 180 million that qualifies for reimbursement for any improvements off-site. And that, and moving a skate park or covering the cost of that would be considered an expenditure that has nothing to do with school construction.
I see. Okay. I wish Mr. Longabuco had stayed.
He would verify that because that was also something that we discussed on Wednesday with the.
Sorry.
He would verify, that is true. Mr. Aaron would verify that. He's, he's the guru on what qualifies for, uh, school construction expenses and what doesn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, if there are no other comments, then, um, I would like to open the meeting back to the public for agenda items only. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda items only. Public comment. Seeing and hearing none. There being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
By Councilman Oliver. Thank you.